Hello.
Mr. Jeffrey's happy. He's campaigning for Matt Shorter and Matt Sillipin Beach.
I am.
I just, I saw that this morning.
I did talk to him before. When I said, "Good business finance, accounting plans, we're also going to have a new show." And he was like, "Well, we'll come back." How's Matt today? Appreciate the campaign you're for.
No, it's just, it's, uh, and we had a ten minute talk. He shared the same feelings.
He's like a good guy.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
With the cards.
I'm sorry, is he a mafia member? No. So, university.
Are you guys done?
Is this my wing? The six o'clock.
Good evening and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education meeting of October fifteenth. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. A moment of silence this evening is for Claire Reason, who was a language arts teacher at Clay High School. He served about twenty-three years. And I think we should also think about our friends and relatives who lived through the hurricanes. I believe in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have the roll call, Mrs. Strick, please?
Sir, and Mr. Shea?
Here.
Mr. Eversman?
Here.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Here.
Mr. Savick?
Here.
Mr. Zavisky?
Here.
Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as ready.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
And we have two gentlemen here with us this evening. Mr. Ethan Ackerman and Mr. Pearson Lindhart. And we are going to give a government report from the high school. Gentlemen, you're on.
Good evening. My name is Pearson Lindhart. You may know me from past board meetings, but to, even if you go over there. But to introduce myself again, I'm a senior at high school. I've been in student government for four years and I'm past president. I'm also involved in other clubs such as Lime Lighters and Beadown and Shire. I'm here today alongside Ethan to tell you about what the student body has been up to and some events that have happened at place so far this year. To start, Brown's Volcanis offered their annual senior parking spot purchases. At this point, as a senior can purchase a parking spot for the year for twenty-five dollars, but then have a time period during the summer to paint it. This year, there were a hundred and five spots painted and purchased. Uh, next, Executive Student Government planned their annual senior sunrise. The event took place on August thirtieth and began at six forty-five AM. It was a little hard to wake up that early, but we are out there. Uh, the college government provided pancakes while they attended. They were really good. So overall, it was a great turnout with most of the senior class attendants. BCSN held their game day tailgate here at the school, not once but twice. We were told that our student section gaming cheerleaders made it the best game day tailgate they ever had. Student Government has held numerous pep rallies so far this year. There have been plenty of very fun events in these pep rallies, including making a teacher into a cake, Hungry Hungry Hippo, but with, uh, students, Grow in the Dark Tic Tac Toe, Lime Music Chairs, and so many more. These pep rallies should bring spirit to the school and the student government loves to host them. Our marching band was honored to receive WTL's Band of the Week. This award is voted on every week and voters are given the opportunity to vote for multiple different bands. Clay captured forty percent of the popular vote the week that they won. Uh, homecoming was a huge success this year. Leading up to homecoming, Student Government hosts multiple events such as Ironman, Paddle Pop, a bonfire, and a parade. This year, sophomores took the win at Ironman and the freshmen were the champions of Paddle Pop. Our bonfire was extremely fun this year. We had a great turnout. The homecoming corps and student volunteers played games such as the dance off and dancing contest. Lastly, the annual homecoming parade was amazing. Every year, we hosted contests between all the floats. This year, the junior class won the best float. To get off homecoming weekend, the Senior Student Government hosted a pep rally. In this pep rally, homecoming corps played several games and had lots of fun doing it. September was National Suicide Prevention Month. During Shire, a few members wore uplifting messages and shout out by different entrances around the school. We know this month affects many adults too. Hopefully, some of the students and staff found comfort in these messages as well. Uh, the counselors, the counselors have been meeting with the senior class during our Shire periods to educate us on the college admissions process and status shifts. These meetings have proved to help, to be very helpful to many students in the senior class. Uh, to wrap up my part of the speech here, I'd like to give a shout out to our varsity volleyball and varsity football team as they are this year's Cardinal Division Champions. Thank you for listening to me and I hope you all have a great rest of your meeting and Ethan will go next.
Hello, my name is Ethan Ackerman and I'm a member of the student or the junior student government, Lime Lighters, Skills USA, the wrestling team, the equestrian team, Varsity Voices, and an executive student government officer. I stand in front of you today alongside Pearson to inform you of some awesome things happening within the student body. Firstly, let's talk about the month of September. According to the Ohio Department of Education and workforce, September is a attendance awareness month, a nationwide recognition of the connection between regular school attendance and academic achievements. During last month, four hundred and sixty-one students had no unexcused absences, tardies, or early dismissals. These four hundred and sixty-one students were rewarded with color ice, which was their incentive. The Good Will Challenge was absolutely huge success. It was a friendly competition each week between two local high schools that paddled off, that battled off the field in a donation drive benefiting Goodwill Industries of Northwest Ohio. The proceeds from the sales of donations helped fund job training and job placement for individuals with barriers throughout Northwest Ohio. We repaired with Whitler and Clay won yet again. And brought in nineteen thousand seven hundred and twenty pounds of donations. Whitler was placed second, brought in fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty pounds of donations. The Career Fair, the Career Fair is another event that went very well. Towards the end of the school day in the Potter gym, juniors and seniors had the opportunity to go meet with people who represent different colleges, trades, military bridges, and jobs. During the time, they could gather information and obtain a better grasp of what the future could look like for them. The Culinary Program also catered this event. Claytober is happening throughout this month. It is Clay High School's spin on Inktober, where three plots were given per week. And anyone who wants to participate can join in the creative fun. And they, what they do is they draw something, draw something pertaining to the prop using pen and paper. That's ink, use the pen. And this is an opportunity for students who aren't necessarily in art to participate in artistic events. As some of you may know, Lime Lighters is putting on their first show of the season, Les Mains. And I have the privilege of playing Marius in this production, who's a student, revolutionary, and a boy who falls in love with present. Les Mains is the world's longest running musical, a true modern classic based on Victor Hugo's novel and featuring one of the most remarkable scores of all time. The Montar Award winning Les Mains is as groundbreaking today as it was when it first premiered in London in nineteen eighty-five. Set in nineteenth century France, Jean Valjean is released from years of unjust imprisonment and finds nothing in store for him but mistrust and mistreatment. He breaks his parole in hopes of starting a new life, initiating a lifelong struggle for redemption as he is relentlessly pursued by Police Inspector Javert, who refuses to believe that Valjean can change his ways. Finally, during Paris, during the Paris Student Uprising of nineteen thirty-two, Javert, excuse me, Javert must confront his ideas after Valjean spares his life and saves that of the student revolutionary who has captured the heart of Valjean's. Epic, grand, and inspiring, the Les Mains Student Edition packs an emotional well that will leave your heart warm and your senses mesmerized. Tickets for the performance are available online at claylimerers.org. There are thirty-four people in the cast and fifteen people will be helping backstage with tech. Just two days ago, the choir performed their front seat, front row seat concert, which was a fun, successful evening. On December sixth, sixth, the choir will be taking a trip to go sing in Channel Thirteen's Going for the Holidays toy drive. They will perform on the four o'clock news. Varsity Voices, which is an after-school group, will be singing at various community events such as the Miami Bay County Quilter Guild Christmas banquet and the Culinary's Christmas luncheon in the Performing Arts Studio. Another program that is underway is Triumph, which is an organization designed to represent the student leadership within the assemblies or within the ensembles in choir and band. They will have a holiday service project in the upcoming future. Lastly, I will touch up on some of the upcoming events that I have not stated. On October twenty twenty, or on October twenty-second, the band will be having their concert. Volunteer Focus is hosting haunted hallways here at the school from six to eight PM with a non-scarier time from six to six forty-five PM on October twenty-ninth. The eighth grade tours are fast approaching, which will be held November thirteenth. And the eighth grade parent info night will take place on November fourteenth. And as stated before, Lime Lighters is putting on Les Mains. And the show dates that will be, and the show dates for that will be the fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth of November. That's all I have. Thank you for your time and have a great night.
Thank you. Very nice.
Thank you, guys.
And you don't have to stay for the meeting. You can leave and go do your homework. Okay, next on the agenda is public participation at board meetings. Do we have any cards, Mrs. Strick?
I have no cards, no.
May I? Did you, Mr. Ryan, would you?
No, I already talked to, I already talked to them.
Okay, very fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. And we move to the treasuries report, please, Mrs. Strick.
Thank you. My part is a PhD, it's a kids' report. But, um, real quick overview, the, um, very brief tonight. We're kind of in between everything. Um, our real estate tax collections are a little bit higher than our spring estimates, so we'll adjust those estimates when we update the five-year forecast. The other operating revenues are running high, but that has to do with the Medicaid monies. We've already transferred those to the, um, PI fund, but they were from the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two audit, um, so that's why that's high. And our expenditures are tracking in line with estimates. And our, our true cash days, we continue to be declining about two weeks, fourteen days from the last year. So we're just slowly evening our balances. Um, so the Les Mains items, I just want to make you aware of, the auditors were in for their field work this past week. Um, I think they're done. I know that was pretty quick. Um, I will have gap work papers completed by early next week. The final expenditures, we're all, we're all done, except the art escer. Um, I, it's not due yet, um, but we want to make sure we get that final payment out. Um, we're still waiting on a checklist for the AC. That's why it hasn't been paid. Uh, we have to get it paid by the end of November. So, poor Dean, he's, I've been nagging him, so. But we are not going to have to file for an extension, so I just, we've been around and around. So I just want you aware of it, so that will happen. Um, still, I, I may be asking too often because they're not responding to my emails now, but. I have not gotten the final evaluations yet from Lucas County Auditor's office. Um, I'm still using thirty percent, but we need to get that. Um, and then just so you're aware, our annual insurance open enrollment has been ongoing these past couple of weeks and it will close tomorrow evening, eleven fifty-nine. I need to send a reminder out to staff one more time, so they're aware of that. But that's all been going on. We got a lot going on. Um, I have some comparatives for you. I'm not going to talk about them. I just thought you could take a look. We do not have the twenty twenty-four comp report. These are reports compiled with all the information we send to the state. Um, and this is from fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, which is last fiscal year. They usually don't come out till like January sometimes. I mean, it just takes a while. It's so, um, just starting the process as I start working on the five-year and we start looking at where we're at and where we're headed. So, um, just wanted that in your hands. Unless there are questions, that's my report tonight. Much more coming up later.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the treasuries report, please.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Four questions. Roll call.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. And we will have an executive session at the end of our meeting, so we'll go on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Okay, moving on to new business. We have transportation contracts and we need a motion to enter into those contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That is with the Anderson family to the Toledo School of the Arts, the Webb family to the Toledo School of the Arts, and the West family to the Toledo School of the Arts. Now you have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
All right, Mr. Savick?
Yes.
I heard Mr. Shea next.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item B under new business. We need a motion to approve the following overnight trip. The Clay High School baseball team would like to go to Louisville, Kentucky to a tournament, March twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item C, donations. We need a motion to accept the following donations. Mercy St. Charles donated school supplies with an estimated value of one thousand dollars along with a five hundred dollars to go towards the purchase of Nest shirts for every student and staff member. Nest shirts, by the way, are the shirts, they divide the children into groups, um, and, and they do good things for each other, backing each other up and so forth. So those Nest shirts, um, each Nest has a different color. And then for the Furniture Palace, that which is the Ta- the Taou family, they donated a new couch to the teaching profession's classroom with a value of three hundred dollars. Now you have a motion to accept those donations, please?
So moved with gratitude.
A second?
I, uh, second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item D, there are twenty-four items under this. The following policies are being presented for their first reading. A recommendation for the adoption will be made in November. And they all come from the last legislative session and most of them are mandated by the state. Item E, calendars. Review of the twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar option. A recommendation for the adoption will be made later. Student organizations. We need approval for the, uh, following support organizations. The Lime Lighters, the Clay Band Boosters, the Oregon Foundation, Jerusalem Parent Organization, Koi Parent Grandparent Association, Star Parent Organization, Facet Parent Organization, which is known as EPO, the Oregon Hockey Parents Association, the Eagle Running Club for Track, the Eagle Gridiron Club for Football, Oregon Volleyball Club, Oregon Lady Eagles Soccer Club, Oregon City Schools Athletic Boosters Districtwide, the Eagle Harrier Club, which is cross-country, and the Lake Erie Wrestling Club. Now you have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item G, disposal of materials. These are all books from Cardinal Stretch. There are four hundred and fifty-three of them to be disposed of with, um, dates going back to two thousand and six, so it's time for new ones there.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. And moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Britt.
Thank you. So, um, I appreciate the opportunity to share a few things. Um, I didn't put anything in your agenda items. And because I spoke to most of these items in previous presentations, I want to highlight a few at this time. First, I want to thank the student council members who came tonight. Uh, I think they have a future radio career. Uh, way they reflected and used their voice to communicate with all of us tonight. I appreciate that. It's always good to hear about the, the awesome opportunities they have here as students, um, you know, in this building. So, thank you, Mr. Jurski, as well for, for that opportunity to hear from them. Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendars. We're in the process of working through those calendars. We're very close on the twenty-five, twenty-six. I'd say probably more than close. Uh, we're still working through twenty-six and twenty-seven. If there are people in the community that want to share comments about that, they can feel free to contact me in regards to that. Uh, board policy update, you saw, uh, the number there. Karen and I have met and talked about, uh, those policies. That really, like she mentioned, it's mostly due to the fact of, uh, legislation that was appointed back in June of, uh, twenty twenty-four. And this is the update to that as we move forward. And some of them become law as early, uh, as, you know, here in a couple of weeks. And, and, uh, we're, we're making those adjustments, uh, moving forward. Um, I want to thank Dean, uh, for having a meeting with our operations staff. Um, we sat down, he went through with them all of the savings that they've been involved with through their work they've done in this district. From water to electric to heating air and all those sorts of things. It showed them the money that we have saved over the years. Um, it, that's tremendous impact in that conversation with, with these individuals who are doing that work for us to, to make us, uh, have the opportunity to, to save that money. And then we also then started talking about what other ideas do we have to save money, you know? And, and give them an opportunity to talk and think. And we challenged them to think of more, uh, in the future, uh, to, to try to save us money. And so I wanted to thank him for that meeting. And I think it's very valuable to celebrate that with them, show them the results of their, their labors and, um, you know, focus on what can we do in the future as well. So I want to thank him for that. That's my report right now. I, I just want to say though too, you know, my first time, uh, in front of you sitting in this seat versus over there for a couple of months. Um, I, as I shared with Business Advisory Committee today in our meeting, you know, everybody's been very nice to me and very welcoming. I appreciate that. Um, I'm still learning, uh, workflow especially. Um, but, you know, I, I think one of the things that, that I shared with the Business Advisory Committee today is, you know, the focus is on what can we do to make sure our kids walk across the stage of graduation prepared for whatever they want to do? Do they have the academic and personal skills to be successful uh, in the world where more than likely, they're going to change jobs ten times? That's, that's the new, uh, data that we have. Um, and probably change, uh, the content of what they do as far as, you know, the type of job, um, you know, at least a couple of times throughout that career. And so what can we do to get them ready for that? You know, we provided the academic piece, but we also need to focus on that personal side of communication and collaboration skills. And I can go down the list of creativity and critical. And I can go down the list of creativity and critical thinking and so forth. And, you know, that is what my focus is about. In making sure that those kids, from a pre-K through 12 experience, each step of the way, have a set of skills that build upon each other to get to that point when they walk across that stage as they're ready for whatever is in front of them moving forward. So just know that. And I appreciate all the support and the welcoming of the community and the staff as well to this position. So thank you. And to the board as well. I appreciate the opportunity to work with the board that's very collaborative and listens. And I appreciate that and wants to work to the betterment of our students. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fritz. Old business. Does anyone have any old business? Okay, board discussion? Okay, I do have the good news report. End of the first quarter is tomorrow, the 16th, and report cards go home the 25th. Conferences come the first week in November. Veteran state programs across the district are mostly on November the 11th. The Community Candy Crawl is October 20th, and Dr. Fritz and I will be standing at Clay to pass candy if anybody wants to join us. You're welcome to come. And that's also the last equestrian meet at the Ottawa County Fairgrounds, starting at 9:00 in the morning. Facet's Volley for the Cure is October 23rd at 6:30. They raise money for cancer, breast cancer. Third grade state testing comes October 22nd and 23rd. Eisenhower's Halloween Bash for their students is the 24th. Band banquet is October 30th. Triumph, which is the music honorary, just inducted 11 new members. The girls' golf team took second in the Cardinal Division. Julia Joyce was named to the second team, and Emma Martin and Tori Kuznoff were named to the first team. And our coach, Kevin Crossen, was named Coach of the Year, and I think that's his third time. Correct? Yeah, it was his third time to be Coach of the Year. That's very good. Very proud of him. Girls' volleyball won the NLL Cardinal Division and under the championship of our new head coach, Nicole Morrison. Of course, we know boys' football beat Napoleon and will be division champion or co-champion. And all of our schools are working on increasing student attendance because attendance is one of the top indicators of success, not just in school, but in the future career of anybody working. And a final reminder is for Facet parents, they have an after-school homework help program for all their junior high students. So if anybody needs help, that is available to them. Anything else for board discussion? That's what I have down. We need work session and board meeting. Next board meeting is November 19th. Work session the week of November 4th, fifth, sixth, or seventh?
The fifth is election day.
Oh, good point.
Yeah, the sixth.
No fifth, I hear, no sixth.
How about the fourth?
Fourth? Monday, Monday the fourth?
5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m.
Monday the fourth?
Four, 24, 5:00 o'clock. Mr. Zabisky, how's that for you?
Think it'll work.
Okay. Mr. Eversman?
Yes, I'm going to take that day off of work this month.
Okay. At 5:00. So board meeting the 19th and work session the fourth at 5:00. And we will need a motion to go into executive session for appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official in depth, and for matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? There will be no decisions made at that moment from executive session. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate it. Yep. May I give the motion?
Okay, here we go. Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Thank you.